I'd like to invite, actually first let's have a... Invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Phyllis, can we have a roll call, please?
Dave Collier.
Here.
Greg Kuschel.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Follin.
Here.
Ari Sher.
Here. You all email a copy of our minutes from our January 17th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those or amend those minutes? Subвод second. Have a motion to approve the minutes from January 17th. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, the same. I want to kick off this evening's meeting with some introductions. Greg and Les, why don't you both come forward and introduce some new personnel officially? Les, come on up too. I think these guys have pretty much all kind of been introduced, but let's make it all official so that all the council members can meet them this evening. Greg?
I'd like to introduce our two as new officers, and that would be Austin Gross.
Come on up.
Come on up. Austin's 26 years old. He was hired in December of last year. He's a former sheriff's deputy. Been on there for two years. He's single. And he lives in Decatur.
Not single for long.
No, no, no. That's a classification right now. The way we're thinking, he's going to do some good job. The next one's Reed Arnold. Reed's 24. He comes to us from Osseum. He was hired January this year. He's married. His wife's name is Megan. And he lives just west of Decatur, on 224.
Thank you. And with the hiring of those two, Greg, you have assigned someone out to North Adams?
Correct. We now have Kevin Gerber is now our new SRO out at North Adams School. He'll be taking over there for Chris Appeler. And so far, he's everything's going well.
So with the hiring of these two, that gets us up to where we were when we were at full capacity in the middle of 2016. And with the hiring of the new officer tonight, we will be up one from in the past, which is something we've been wanting to do.
Um, yes.
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 And Les?
Our two new full-time firefighters, Caleb Gage, who will soon be and he took Craig Hurley's place, who left us for Louisiana, which by the way, Craig, it looks like he's going to get on a fire department in Louisiana.
Oh, good.
Taylor's second generation, Roger's son, and...
We won't hold that against him.
Yeah, we're trying to try to hook that over that.
Look at that.
Some really good job. He hit the ground running. He was already in an investigation class. And he's just, today, he went, as part of his workday, went on some training and did his first investigation with an investigation company that was teaching their class. So he's going to be a certified state investigator here real soon. And that's one of the gaps, the one fiddle before Jim retired. So Craig was hit the ground running and doing us a great job. And he's pulling him, 29. And he's also married, so there's nobody, no, they're not shopping. And he started December 27th, and he's our additional person. So he's made us, so we now have three full-time, or three...
People per day.
Three on a day. And both of them are first responders. You're an EMT, and he's a medical first responder. So, you know, and they're both doing a great job. He's had a little incident today, but he won't be on. Every fireman's fear is that five-inch hose is laid in the truck. And if the back section drops off on the ground, its intent is to unload itself.
Oh geez.
And coming back from a run today, he unloaded about 500 foot of water. Other than that, you know.
On the highway, boom.
Right along the side. But that's something to look back on. There will be a good job. There's kind of our future, so. Doing great.
Well, I think that I welcome all four of you to being on the staff of the city of Decatur. And I think you'll find it, it's a great place to work. It's a family environment. And thank you for your service. And Melissa, maybe if you could step out and get a picture of the two chiefs and deputy chiefs with the four, and we can hit that to Bob and circulate it, and Mr. Carbot.
I'd just like to say, as a board of work member, it's very rewarding to have such good qualified people that come on board right away. That is, it just made me feel good because I...
Made a lot easier, didn't it?
Oh, yeah. But that was always one of my thoughts. Boy, wouldn't it be nice to have some lateral changes and to have some good qualified people that come in to the fire department right away. And then, that's great. Welcome, guys.
Yep. Thanks, all of you. One more comment in the back there, Jeremy?
Say it out loud.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Recently, Matt Schultz, I don't know, have you known him, some of you don't, has been promoted to my operations manager assistant position. I want to thank Matt for stepping up to the position. He's done a wonderful job.
All right. Anybody else want to introduce anyone tonight? If not, we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. First thing I want to discuss is the Madison Street project and the contract with JPR. Kevin McCrory's here tonight. And we had a meeting, the same meeting we talked about the streetlights that we talked about at the Board of Works meeting. I think a couple of council members were there. And really, Melissa should be in here when we're doing this. Yeah, you do that, and have her come on back in. Yeah, you can't be two places at once, can you? First thing up is the Madison Street project and the contract. So at the last council meeting we had, which was three weeks ago, we discussed the contract and we tabled it pending getting more information. And I think we've kind of discussed that with Kevin. I don't even know where we're at for sure with this. Melissa, help me out.
For the Madison Street project, we're ready, council has the JPR's contract to oversee the construction, to prepare construction documents to get that project started.
Kevin, or Kevin? You're not Kevin, you're Tyler. Tyler and Craig, you guys were put at that meeting. Were your questions answered? Do you have any questions this evening or comments?
Jeremy, what, I think we had listened to the discussion, and I don't know, there was some clarity on the construction overseeing? Was that something we were going to discuss with him at council, I thought?
Yeah, I was kind of hoping at this point, whether we do the oversight or whether you're paying for the oversight.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions?
Kevin, you got a, maybe you can comment on that.
Yeah, thank you. One more second.
Go ahead. Yeah, please.
In response, what Jeremy just said, there's two kinds of oversight. I guess you could call the lower level one, which is, we call it construction administration. It's really more of an administrative role for the most part. It is the change orders that would come in from the contractor, also approving any materials, also looking at pay requests from the contractor, approving those and handing those on to the city for payment, doing what we call a final punch-out at the end of the project, which is a lot different than a higher level, which would be a daily supervision, if you will, which is not part of our contract. Our contract is what we call contract administration, or CA, which is the lower level. And those are some of those, Jeremy, that the city could do. I mean, we're open for discussion on that. So if you elect to do that, then we would have a slight reduction in our fee.
For the construction administration?
Yes, construction administration would be the proper terminology of what we would be providing contractually to the city.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions. Your fee is based, is going to be based on an hourly rate? Is that what you...
No, it's actually a lump sum, an agreement. It's based on the services. We sit down and figure out what it takes hours for our staff to complete the contract documents, the bidding process, and in this case, the construction administration. We figure out all those hours, and by different people at different wage rates within the firm, and then we come up with a total fee from that. And that's how the fee is established. It's not on an hourly basis.
Okay. So the fee is not to...
Not to exceed.
But it's not going to be any less in essence?
No. Unless so stipulated by the city.
I guess, my next question is, when you're going to go start putting this out for bid, we had the first paperwork on the project costs for the grant. There was some sewer costs involved in that. Is that stuff that's going to be looked at deeper in this new contract?
Absolutely. What you have there in front of you could only be ascertained in the cost put together from what we could visually see on the site and not without going into great detail drawings, because it was for a grant application, which at that time was the OKRA grant. Now, as we track our costs and modify that actual sheet you have in front of you and fine-tune it as we go along. So there'll be stages that we'll meet with Jeremy and other people within the city. We'll have like a 35%, 60%, 75% phases, where we'll look at each one of those cost centers, each item, and find out whether there's ability to save costs in some items. Maybe we don't need some sewer work that we had in there, but we had to be, we had to be safe on that cost as well, make sure we had some numbers in for. And they may in turn not actually be there. So that will get fine-tuned.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to understand, you're not basing it off of this cost, and you're going to come back to the city and talk it over with different department heads on what costs can be saved and...
Well, our fee right now is based off of...
Your fee, I'm sorry. I don't mean your fee, but construction costs.
Construction cost is not necessarily what you see on paper. That's correct answer.
That was prepared for the OKRA grant.
Right.
It's in a form that they like to see in the grant application. They want to make sure that you really have considered water and sewer, and so those costs are going to go ahead and be included. Then it would be appropriate for construction documents to save, to reevaluate what of those things are needed in that.
Yeah, we were making educated calls on, from our experience in that, on the cost centers there, and their historic costs that we pulled from other projects we've done recently. So we look at those costs, whether it's per unit, per square foot, or for whatever it might be, and we apply that toward this project from what we knew. And that's how that cost was arrived at. But it's not necessarily the final construction cost.
And that document really isn't relevant any longer?
Right. We'll know the construction costs once it goes up to bid and we get bids from the contractor.
Will we have a new construction cost before it goes up to bid?
Yeah, we'll, you'll have our estimate.
Cost, yeah, engineer's estimate, because then you're going to look at, you know, if it comes out of that.
Let the bids...
And you're going to say, wow, we need to have some alternates in here. We need to have some way to shave it down. So we might have some add alternates, saying, we only have this much to spend on the project. And if it comes in over, how are we going to get it under control cost-wise? And a lot of times, that's done with what we call add alternates. So we'll pick those out, we'll work with the committee and decide what those should be. And we'll use those to get within the budget amount.
Does your contract, Kevin, cover any kind of permit fees or, I mean, acquisition of any thing that we have to...
It does. If we had to go for like real five for erosion control, which is disturbing over an acre, I'd say that would be interesting whether we were or not. But any other permits, we would be taking care of in ours. Very little, and this is, it's not, it's unlike the St. Mary's nature preserve, it's a lot less permit process. It's more local permits within the city.
I think, going back to Tyler's question, the costs that were included on that sheet that was previously provided to council really has nothing to do with how you determined the cost for your services. Your analysis is looking at the scope of the project and then determining what it's going to take for you to perform the services of designing the project, bidding it, and then possibly overseeing it for the, what'd you call it, construction administration?
Construction administration, right. And that's exactly right. It is, there's still, and I'm glad you said the word "design," because even though we have designed it for the OKRA grant application, there still is design work phases to be done yet, because there's items to be determined in that. So there's still design involved, a lot of engineering, surveying, which is included in our fee also, which is a cost that has to be done to go out there and get all the great information and all the utility locates and everything else. So that's also part of our services.
And whether the estimates that were reflected here are modified up or down to arrive at the estimated cost of the project, that has nothing to do with adjusting your fees one way or the other?
No. The only thing, there is a clause in our contract, if you were to say, we'd like to add half a million more dollars to the project, we would obviously then be, it would only be fair that we would be able to adjust our price at that time. But if the scope of the work remains the same, which I assume will be, and the budget that you're basically going to spend, then no, we have no cost change to our fees. And our fees are based on historic, we look historically at what it takes us to do this kind of work.
So we're looking at $52,500 is what you're asking for this evening?
What's seven-five?
Or are we asking, we're going ahead and going for the, so it's basically $60,000 total?
Right. I don't know which one you have in mind.
Yeah. Well, are we including any of Second Street and the alleys, or are we just doing Madison?
That's the big question, because it makes a difference in our fee.
Because then the next one went one block and then Second Streets, portions of Streets, both out, that was a $74,000, is that...
That's correct.
Seventy-four plus?
Plus $7,500 on the typical construction administrative services.
Right. We, I call that the wraparound. We just did Madison, which is our original proposal we wrote. Then we came back and we added what we like called the wraparound, but that's wrapping a half a block on Second Street, both north and south. And then there was a little bit of alleyway work to pull visitors and people from the parking through those alleys and onto Second Street. So if you include the whole thing, that's the higher number, correct?
If we were to go with the lower, which is just Madison?
Correct.
And in the process of determining construction and materials?
Bids.
We were able to make our dollar stretch a lot farther?
Mm-hmm.
Could we then come back and tag on the wraparound?
Our recommended amendment to the mother contract, or the original contract is the easiest way to do that, the quickest way to do it. Just amend that and add the additional fees to do the additional work.
I mean, from, I feel like from earlier budget discussions, all we're looking at is Madison Street.
Yep. Jeremy said, once we turn that corner, we got a lot of water lines and other... But he's giving us the op, you're saying you're giving us the option, if we take on Madison Street right now for the 60, we could turn the corner for the...
If you can, yeah. If you want to go on, and we would amend our contract to include additional fees for that.
That's a pretty smart thing to do.
Yep.
Yeah. I would agree with that, too.
So, any other questions? Comments? Does this include, you're going to help us with the pub, I know you've already been to a ton of meetings, because I've seen you. Are you going to assist us with some more public...
Yes.
Okay.
If there's the occasion to be in front of anyone to make a presentation, I'm here, I'm here for you all.
Okay.
As your consultants, so.
I appreciate that.
I just have one question. Really, that's not anything to do with this, but...
Jeremy could do that if he wanted to.
And then mainly, I don't want to step on anybody's toes here either, but the main design of this street, was cost taken into account, or we like...
You're asking papers.
Well, I'm not saying papers, but the whole design, like, I don't want a cheap street, but I don't want the most expensive street either.
It's a fair question.
We want to stretch our money as far as we can, but we don't want it to be cheap.
The most we can...
Where are we at in that range?
In the world of standard streetscape improvements, this would be a higher-end one, because it's more than a streetscape. It is a plaza, it is the centerpiece for Decatur's downtown. It's the link between the courthouse, the downtown, the Second Street, the excitement, and the future riverfront. It is the linkage between the two, and it becomes a multipurpose plaza that can be shut down for art fairs, festivals, other kinds of events you want. So, yes, it is a higher level than a typical streetscape, a streetscape project intentionally so to do that.
Which gives us leeway for modifications if we need to cut back, so.
But it's not the standard template that you would see on the rest of the street, although the rest of the street improvements in the future, although the materials in there will be reflected in the rest of the improvements in the downtown, but not to that level of richness. It'd be a little bit less for the rest.
Yep.
Because it is, it was earmarked as a special, a special block.
Correct. Cool. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve our contract with JPR? I would make that motion. For the full... For the 52 plus eight, $60,000? Yes. Have a motion?
I'll second.
I'll second. I have a second from Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin, do you want to sign this while you're here?
Yes, I will.
You said there's a mother clause that you can take us if we do choose to go on? An amendment.
Sure, we'll just amend that particular contract, and we'll provide you the language for that.
Thank you.
Nature preserve, right here.
What about, I have a couple more questions on this.
Go ahead.
Fine contract, but we're waiting on Schaefer to find out if we...
Who's going to...
Who's going to tear it down? Does that need to be, does he need to wait to start before that's decided, so we know what's going on there?
I think Jeremy would say yes.
Yes, we need to, the whole place in the February, we're no, paying to that property, what they can do to that. And that's going to dictate the schedule.
Right.
But it only add one in what can be...
My understanding that, Kevin, it could be as late as the fourth quarter of this year, if I know what comes after.
Could be.
Could be. Actually, it could be as they ask.
But didn't we have conversations that if, even if Kevin did get that...
He would seek approval to do it early.
We would lobby as hard and hot as we could.
It could be as late as...
Right. Right. But I want to be aware that it, that is the farthest point, but we could make adjustments, maybe.
But if he had turned down into February, we need to be prepared to take action.
Yeah.
And slowly then take over that action with the utilities, if the utilities, if he's actually in the building. Right, if he's in M.O., if that...
He was out in hallway, out in the alley the other day.
Everything's going to look like water to that.
So when we're slowing, progressing that way, there's just some things that we need to find out.
While Kevin is here, Kevin has also been our consultant on the DNR project, the nature preserve that will be taking place or being constructed between the river and Stratton subdivision. And I would like to formally announce that there is a public hearing. There's been some residents asked for a public hearing with the DNR for more explanation as to what that project will entail. And that public hearing is this Wednesday, the 8th, tomorrow night, the 8th. It's at the Riverside Center at 5:00 P.M. And I welcome anyone to come to support that project. I think it's a great quality of life project that would add benefit to our community in several ways. So please, take the time to come to that meeting.
Appreciate it.
Anything you want to add to that, Kevin?
No, I agree. It's an exciting project, and we look forward to being there tomorrow night. Now, that'll be, basically, that meeting will be run by the DNR.
DNR, yes.
So they have, they have stock questions they ask, so it's not really a massive open forum.
You've been to one of those before? I've never have, so I...
Uh, one.
Okay.
It's been a while ago. I slept a few nights in.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. And we got, we're ready for your signature up here. Here, he just come right over here. We'll control that. Okay, and... Two of them? He's not hearing these. While I have Melissa here, let's talk about the Creating Places, or Patronicity, if you will, community fundraising event, or project that would go toward the Madison Street project.
In light of us not receiving the OKRA grant for the Madison Street project, we've been exploring some other grant opportunities. And there is a grant opportunity called Creating Places, and what it is, is a crowdfunding program. So like a GoFundMe that you go on, and if you want to donate $8, you can donate $8. If we raise $50,000, the state will match $50,000.
Coming from?
Coming from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. So the city is going to be the applicant, and I've talked to Tim, and I've talked to Phyllis, and Phyllis has talked to State Board of Accounts, and Phyllis feels comfortable that this is, she's all good with this. And so we're in the application process of applying to be a part of this program.
And we're going to apply for the full $50,000?
We're going to apply for the full $50,000. And we're confident the community can help us raise another $50,000.
Tax deductible contributions, the people will be...
And it'll go toward the Madison Street project.
So, yeah, they give, if they give $50,000, it turns into $100,000. So it's a great, great way to...
And we can raise more than $50,000. It won't be matched dollar for dollar, but we will certainly accept all those contributions.
And it is time-sensitive, correct?
It is time-sensitive. We have 30 days to raise $50,000.
So, yeah, we'll be very busy with that.
We're still in the application process, and we're getting pretty close.
And it's all, would be done online, correct?
The primary form of donation is online. You would click the button. If you would like to give an offline donation, we're also able to accept those, and that will count for the match. We just have to record it in a little bit different way.
Okay.
That will be eligible for the dollar-for-dollar match.
Okay. So I went over this as getting ready to kick off. Before it kicks off, we'll make it public, and boy, will we make it public once it kicks off. So, yeah. Okay, thank you, Melissa. Also in announcing, I announced the public hearing for the DNR grant. I also want to put a bug out here now about the Hometown Collaboration Initiative, Community Forum. The HCI committee, which was just, it's not a formal committee, it's just every time we meet, there's more people come, and we add to that, add to that group. We put out the survey to the community. We were hoping to get 1,000 surveys. We ended up with 1,172, is that right? 1,172 surveys, so we exceeded our goal there. And so the next thing that will happen will be our Community Forum. That's a week from tomorrow night at the Riverside Center. And it will be from 5:30 until approximately 8:00 to 8:30. That sounds like a long time, but trust me, those two and a half to three hours will go very quick. Just like, I mean, all of our meetings that we've had with HCI have been two- to three-hour meetings, and they all go very quickly. They're not boring, they're fun, interactive. We'll have food, so don't eat dinner beforehand. We'll have enough food and waters and whatever to feed people. The only hitch is, is we need everyone to register to attend this. We need a head count ahead of time, so we know how many people are coming. And there's a website, I can't rattle it off off the top of my head. Yeah, you can get the link off of our, off the city's Facebook page, or probably even the city's web page. And you need to register to attend that meeting, so that we have the amount of people that are going to be there. We want 100 people there, you know, just like we wanted 1,000 people to take the survey. We want 100 people. If we get 120, that's better. But, so don't say, yeah, I think I'm going to come. You got to register. So encourage your friends, your family. I encouraged all of our department heads to get registered, not just say, I'm going to come. I encouraged the council members not to say, "You're gonna come," get registered. And our city attorney, and-
I'm already registered.
You're already registered, all right. Phyllis, and everyone, so, get registered. Enough on that. Uh, next, I want to formally announce, uh, a letter of resignation that I received, dated January twenty-third. Uh, it went to the Board of Public Works and Safety, it says, "I have informed Jeremy Gilbert that I will be retiring from my position as city forester on March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, to pursue other interests, and it's signed sincerely, Dwight Pierce." Dwight has been our city forester for how many years? You got any idea?
I think close to twenty.
Yeah. And he has a great deal of knowledge when it comes to, uh, forestry and horticulture and everything that goes along with that. He's been a huge asset to the city, and not gonna be an easy, easy person for us to fill. We are, uh, Jeremy's working on an application now to go out, uh, asking for a forestry, forestry degree, or with similar experience, uh, to show qualification for such, and our hopes is to get that person hired, you know, hopefully thirty days or so from now, so. But we wanna thank Dwight for all of his great service, and, uh, wish him nothing but the best in his retirement. Um, next, I have a letter from NDOT, it's, I guess it's titled, "A Letter of Understanding" about an unofficial detour. I'm just gonna read it. It's about a small structure replacement, it's over the Cone Ditch, which is on US-224 West, near the Kemper Lane intersection there. Um, "Dear City Council," it's to all of you, "NDOT will be replacing two small structures on US-224 as referenced above. This work is tentatively scheduled for the summer of two thousand seventeen. US-224 will be closed to replace the structure, thereby creating a need for a road detour. NDOT will have one official detour over state roads as shown on the attached map. Since the official detour is on the state highway system, an unofficial detour has been identified per contract with Street Commissioner Jeremy Gilbert. The unofficial detour will be south on County Road one hundred, to east, and, to east on West Monroe Street, and then north on US-27, as shown on the attached map, and is in accordance with IC eight dash twenty-three dash twenty-one. NDOT will set up and maintain necessary traffic control for the official detour, or arrange with others to furnish the necessary items. The unofficial detour route will not be signed as any type of detour. The City of Decatur will be responsible for signing any weight restrictions on unofficial detour on city roads. NDOT agrees to reimburse the City of Decatur for costs related to damages on the listed unofficial detour on city roads, but reimbursable work must be approved by NDOT prior to the beginning of any and all work. All reimbursable expenses must be documented. Once the district has agreed to the documented expenses, NDOT and the City of Decatur must execute an agreement that indicates the documented expenses. This should be done after the NDOT detour is eliminated. Um, if, if the terms of this letter are acceptable to you, we would appreciate your concurrence, please sign and return the letter to the attention of, and it has the person at NDOT, and they want all the city council members to sign it. Basically, it's that little bridge at, right at Kemper Lane, basically over the Cone Ditch, and the detour for those coming into Decatur on 224, they would turn at County Road one hundred, which is the road that comes up beside Thunderbird, to Monroe Street, you'd take Monroe Street to twenty-seven, and then they can go north or south or whatever from there. So it's a very minor detour. Is, maybe I missed, is this for a week, a month? The letter doesn't say, and where'd Jeremy go? Um, Jeremy said it would not be a very, very, uh-
Ask Matt, who's in the bridge business? How long would it take, Matt? Is the box covered?
Probably at least a couple weeks, I'd say.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a real long time, though, it's nothing even like, well, we got going on out here. But, yeah, I, yeah, probably a couple weeks.
You need a motion?
So, well, we need a motion, and I need all of you to sign it.
I'll make a motion if we sign that.
Okay, I got a motion to assign, sign this, uh, letter of understanding. Second, I have a second from Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same. All right, and I'll pass this around, each of you can sign it, if you would, please. And you can look at the map that's attached, if you need to see it.
This makes you feel good, yeah.
Okay. We have a resolution this evening, uh, in reference to the Adams County Solid Waste District, and a, uh, bill that's being introduced by Senator Liz Brown out of Fort Wayne. Um, Mrs. Brown's bill is not a good bill for Adams County, and would cause a lot of distress and damage to our system that we have at our solid waste district. Uh, many of us up here have already sent her and the committee, the other senators, on, on that committee. Uh, we, we are hoping that it doesn't even get out of committee, and, uh, according to Hank Meyer's latest, um, correspondence, it, it looks as though it's losing momentum. However, just the same, I think it's necessary for the city here, we did the same thing last year on a bill that was introduced, is, uh, we had a resolution. Tim, take it from there and kind of-
Uh, I can tell you that, uh, City Brown is going to be adopting a similar resolution. I talked to Dave Baumgartner, uh, the city council there is opposed to this legislation. I know Mayor McKean has, uh, written a letter and spoken directly to Senator Brown, expressing his opposition. Uh, I thank all of you for taking the time to do it, any, anyone in the public that has done it. Uh, it's not a good, uh, bill for Adams County in particular, let alone districts statewide, uh, because I think if it gets adopted and the district loses the ability to rely in part on, uh, tax revenues to fund its operating budget, it will force the district to increase gate fees significantly, uh, and what you'll see then is illegal dumping and burning throughout the county. Um, so, we're very much opposed to this. This resolution is the city council, uh, weighing in on this and expressing your opposition as well, and, uh, it's Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one, and once this is adopted, then this will be forwarded to Senator Brown, uh, to the, uh, I think the resolution calls for it to go to members of the Senate Environmental Affairs Committee, to Senator Travis Holdman, to Representative Matt Lehman, to the Indiana Association of City Towns, and the Indiana Association of Counties. The reason for that is it not only affects us, but it affects other cities in our county, as well as the county as a whole. So, this time I'd entertain a motion to introduce Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one.
Before we do, uh, does it say, is it IAC, or is it the AIM?
Um, it probably says, it just says, "To the Indiana Associations, Cities and Towns," it doesn't say IAC, so, but it's AIM now.
It's AIM, okay.
All right.
Could I have a, a motion to introduce Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one? I'll make a resolution to introduce two thousand seventeen, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one by short title only. Good point. I have a motion and a second to introduce Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one by short title. Tim?
Should I vote?
Oh, do I have a vote on that? Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed?
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one, short title, "Resolution of the County, Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which expresses its opposition to SB four sixty-five, and the negative impact such legislation will have on the citizens of the City of Decatur and Adams County, Indiana, and which expresses its support of the Adams County Solid Waste Management District, the services it provides and its statutory authority."
Thank you, motion to adopt Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one. Second, a motion and a second for adoption of Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one. Uh, I don't need to recall the name, yes? Or do I? Not on resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you, two thousand, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one has been adopted. Uh, that's all I have on the agenda. As for the mayor's report, basically, all I had was I wanted to, you know, talk about the Hometown Collaboration Initiative Community Forum, and again, urge, uh, you know, this is, this is an opportunity for the citizens of Decatur to help select a project, and 'cause that's what will ultimately come from, uh, the HCI program. It's gonna be either a quality of life project, a leadership project, which would entail probably more volunteerism, or an economic project that would, in some way, shape, or form, serve the economy of Decatur. So, uh, we will be going over those eleven hundred seventy-two surveys at this meeting in small groups, and arriving at opinions, but, you know, in these small groups, and then tallying those, and all that data will then be used, uh, going forward, uh, to the next HCI meeting, which again is open to, to anyone who wants to come to them, and, uh, eventually, like I said, a project will be selected, and this is the way our community can, can have a voice in, in what we do, so, please, register to attend and, and come on the fifteenth at the Riverside Center, five thirty. Department heads, less?
All quiet.
All quiet. Jeremy, good to go. Jim, you got anything?
Okay.
Roger, come on, you got something.
I'm good.
All right. Matt, you got anything tonight? Bill?
Good.
Mr. Richard?
Well, no.
Ann? Melissa? They're all, they're all, go, how about the general public? Any of the four of you have anything this evening?
All good.
They're all good. Council members? I did get a general public. Did you have something, Larry?
I thought Larry was shaking his head.
Oh, you do?
We remind everybody that you're welcome to come to the meeting tomorrow evening-
Correct.
Riverside Center, five o'clock, DNR, we'll be putting on, and they're gonna discuss basically four topics, and, uh-
Yep, yep. Hope to see you all there.
Yeah, I, I got an email today. We have talked about it in the past, Todd Williams from Hoosier Start came and talked, I know he came, we met with a small group to talk about the four fifty-seven plan. Did he come to the council as well?
I don't think so.
Okay. The, the state has an endorsed four fifty-seven plan, where currently the city uses nationwide as a, a plan provider for the four fifty-seven plan, which is where employees can voluntarily put their money for retirement. Uh, there's another option, very few companies do four fifty-sevens anymore, but Hoosier Start is more of a state endorsed organization where they, the big difference right now is that, as a, as a retirement plan sponsor, we as a city have liability as a fiduciary for the four fifty-seven plan. Hoosier Start, state basically takes on that role, so, not, maybe not a huge concern, but something we need to be aware of. They do, uh, we've looked at the plan, I think it, it offers, uh, some that Nationwide doesn't. Nationwide has some things that are, uh, others might find beneficial, but the option, uh, there is, you can have both, and essentially, though, we would want to basically say, "Hey, we're shifting." If you have your, you know, Nationwide, you can stay there, but new monies need to be going towards this other plan." Um, and they do that in other communities, this county has recently done that, so, I just got an email from Todd today, asking, you know, if we had any more questions for him, uh, or would it be wise at this time to have him make one more presentation to the entire group, um, or do we wanna just proceed and say, "Yes, we wanna offer this as a community?"
I think we need to think about that, 'cause I've heard some things that I think we need to discuss first, before we make a decision.
Discuss them. What do we got?
Well, I just heard that they're, when they invest things, it's not here. It's overseas and stuff, someone said it's, I think the money's not invested here, but I don't know if that's true.
Well, no, I mean, it happens, I mean, if you, if you invest in a large cap US, you're-
Well, then maybe they just, just ain't out there.
It's certainly worth looking into.
I think, I think if he could come to a meeting, I think it would be good, you know, not that he needs a long presentation.
I couldn't remember if he had given it to everybody, if it was just to-
I don't think, I think we just had a meeting.
We wanted to invite, put him on the agenda, invite him to-
Okay, I'll, I'll respond to him, yeah.
And if it's something that's a benefit to our employees without a cost, additional cost to us. If they choose it-
Fiduciary responsibility. Overall, overall, I think the platform is better, this is my hat, but-
So you're an expert in this.
Well, but, the plan, the reason that we've kinda stuck with Nationwide in the past is they have a fixed account, because they're an insurance company, they offer a fixed account that others don't, and a lot of our employees that are, they have money in that, and they're, they're enjoying that fixed account, okay? There's, there's other costs that come with that that aren't necessarily known, as far as, you can only shift so much out every year from that account, okay? So that's, that's the gotcha. But, so there's, our current employees that are participating, they do utilize them like that, but is it the best thing from a fiduciary standpoint? One could argue, no. Okay, so, that's where this issue comes to play, and why we don't necessarily wanna say, "You can no longer participate in this," so is it a gradual shift or that type of thing? And he can talk to us about that a little bit more, but I'll, I'll email him back, and maybe we can find a, a calendar.
Get him. Yeah. All right. Any other thing from council? Tim?
Yeah, I have one thing. Uh, I wanna thank Craig in particular, I think he's doing a great job at the chamber, but he got very actively involved on SB four sixty-five. Uh, he made it a point to go out and educate people on it, he took the initiative to, uh, communicate his opposition to this as well. I think that was very effective and helpful, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Phyllis? Have I left anyone out? Bob, Bart? If not, we got some bills to pay, yeah, I got a motion, pay the claims by Craig. Second, I have a second from Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.